Good morning, students. Today I will talk with you about chapter 1 for Architecture 113. I just finally remind with you that when I say Architecture 113, that means the class for 113. It belongs to International Building Code. It's not regard with Architecture 110. So if you are my student on Architecture 110, you need to open the one I call as Architecture 110. This is special for Architecture 113 student only. And we will discuss about International Building Code. Also, we will talk about International Building Code Study Companion. So today I will show you chapter 1 and chapter 35. And if you open Study Companion, it's a study section 1, Scope and Administration. In this one, you must do read on of the chapter. And after that, you answer the question I call thus, the study section 1. And you just answer on of the question, email back to me. And you get 10 point for this one. In this semester, I mean for 2020, this course, we have 18 study sections. So we have 10 point for each of them. So 18, so you got totally 180 point for this one. Beside of that, I transfer or I remove or I change this class to online. Before, if you look in the school booklet and you see that's a remote class, but now I change to online. So that's mean you not required to log in on Tuesday and Thursday because this is online. So you can finish the homework. For me, look like on the schedule. If you look at the schedule, study section 1 is start from August. I think that's 18. And you can finish for me that day or next day. That's mean the next lecture. So that's mean I give you more time for to finish the homework assignment. On a homework assignment, I post it on Canvas. If you go over with Canvas, for example, you go with the Canvas one, let me try to open for you can see. For example, this one. When you open the Canvas, you open your class. You take for the class Architecture 113, for example, this one. And you click on there on the class you register. And you can see two column like this. The first column is inbox, you can email me anytime. And after that, you see the second one. And you look at the file, you click on there. And I post chapter we will study, chapter 1, chapter 3, chapter 6, chapter 5, blah, 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 blah. So everything. And you look in the first one, I show 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, something like that. That mean the one from study section, you need to finish and email back to me. So totally, we have 18 of them. If you look at this, you see that's from number 1, number 2 until number 18. That's on chapter. You need to review reading assessment question for me. So now all of them. I just, right now, I publish for you from number 1 to number 9. The rest of them, I will publish later because I don't want you make them confused because a lot of thing before midterm and after midterm. So that's why I just open from 1 to 9 right now. After you got the midterm, I will continue until 18. So you can open schedule. For the first one, you open the schedule for make sure that you see the deadline. So if you see the schedule. This is schedule, okay. This is the schedule. So if you see the schedule right here, we have two book you need to order. This one is IBC International Building Code. And after that, International Building Code Study Companion. This one cover on of the homework you assignment you need to answer and email back to me. This one cover on the lecture. So that's why both of them have you for finish this course totally. So now I put right here for you can see the textbook. This is before I put that's remote study. But now everything is online. So I need to delete this one for make sure you don't need to, I mean confuse between this one and the other one. So I will change this one later. However, the schedule, it look like this. So you need to read the policy on the right side for make sure that's, I will change this one. For if you go to Happy July YouTube, you can see that I post the update already. This one is the old one, I will correct later. But this one, I didn't change. From you see on the column chapter, this is on of the chapter you need to read. And this is the homework assignment you need to finish and email me that day or the next day. That mean this day. For example, this one from 18 August, study session 1. You can start this one and you can submit for me until 25, okay? Before the second one. So basically, we have 18 of them, 18 assignments. So number 9 is the last one before you go to the midterm. Midterm, we have 125 question, 125 point and 125 question. And after that, we continue from 10 until 18. So you got 90 more point for assessment. And after that, we also get the final. The final value, 165 point. So totally, you have 470 total. You got A if you got 8, 90% up. You got B if you got 80% up. And you got C if you got 65% up. Less than that, you get D and F. So now, this is the schedule. And I hope you follow the schedule and email me anytime if you have any question about that. I will announce before the midterm, maybe 1 or 2 weeks. So you ready to review everything from section 1 to section 9. And something like that, I will announce everything 1 or 2 week before final. So you can take final early 1 week if you like. Just email me for make sure. So now, everything is about the schedule. You need to follow like that. So now, go back with us on chapter, on chapter 1 to 13. I temporary load this one so you can see on a tab. Okay, so go back with us. Today, I share with you about chapter 1 and chapter 35. And that's it also on the study session number 1 for you can do. This chapter, they focus on the scope of work and administration. That's mean from you start to do everything regard with the code one. If you look at the chapter, you can see the study section number 1 and they have cover for chapter 1 and chapter 35. So they have many thing you need to concern with and they call that the key point. The key point is something, you know, you need to go with the lecture. So now, the objective for chapter 1 and chapter 5, they will tell you about IBC International Building Codes. They include the scope, the purpose from the code, why they have the code and what is it. Duty to the building official. That mean what the building official they do in the office. Insurance, a permit, how do you get the permit? Inspection procedure. That's mean step by step, how to go with inspection. With the special one also and existing building and reference standard. Okay. Before I start with this one, I just want to remind with you that I will have 1 chapter after this one. I have start with the question from the student. One student email me 2 days ago, ask me about ADU. How to do that? And I think the best way I will share with all of you, not just that student. The student asked me this question. I will share with you how to create 1 ADU and what is it and what you need to follow the code before you apply for the permit. So I will share with you after this chapter. So that's why if you interesting, you can open after this chapter. You can see the name I call that's ADU. That's the how to design ADU on residential house, okay? So now, go back with the chapter. So in the chapter, you need to learn everything about, not everything, but what is the code and how do you use it? And after that, you need to know about the official permit, inspection, blah, blah, blah. Next one, you can see they put the key points. The key points is some of them, they focus during the chapters. So the first one, you can see the purple for the scope of International Building Code. The code for International Building Code, they have the purpose E for on of you follow the code before you design. So now, the code, any people can use it. But the people uses more than the other one is architect, designer, contractor, inspector, agency people, the people work with the government. So that's why everyone can use the code. For example, you have the house and you want to do addition, you want remodel or something, you can use the code. But a lot, a lot of people use the code like every days. It's the designer, architect, engineer, contractor, inspector, and the people working regard with the building. So that's why they call that's International Building Code. So in there, they show you some of limitation. How can you use that's one? IRC stand for International Residential Code. Let me zoom bigger so I think it's better for you can read that. Okay, so that's it, this one. And after that, they show you the method, how the construction is. Specification differently, separate provision, requirement for governance. Before you start to do something regard with residential, excuse me, or some of the building design, construction, you need to go with the agency and that's one in the city. For example, you live in city of Weater in L.A. or you live it on Westminster City or Anaheim or Santana, something like that. Before you start to do everything regard with design, building, and you need to stop by there. Or you can go to online to look at what the code they use it. And you have any question regard with that before you start to design and apply for the permit. Anything you have structure, you need to apply for plan check for make sure they check for you the code. Everything okay because you start with construction. So now, next one, I call that's the government agency. The one they use the code to correct for you. They review on of, you know, the design. And after that, you need to pay the plan check view for them. This cover in there also. So they have many agency and a lot of provision, appendix you need to apply for. So it's a lot of thing, but I will show you very basic one, few of them. Sorry about that. But I just share with you some of basic one before you start with the code. Or I try to give you many real example about residential and commercial. The one I correct already in the city. I just let you know that I have the part-time job in the plan checker in the city from Westminster. So that's why every day I review a lot of the plan. Some people apply for the permit. So that's why I can share with you about that. Many different one. However, I try at the best to focus for which one you can start from very simple until something more complex. However, the first one, I suggest that's if you have any question about, you know, how to start with the permit? How do you do with your house assemble? You do addition, you do remodel, you do the new house or you have, you thinking about the office or something like that. So you can email me the question and I try at the best to answer your question. And I also share with all of the student about the general question you ask me and I want to share with you about that. Later on, I will do many thing. I think that is very help for you in your future, okay? So go back with us. We have a lot of alternative material you need to learn for, the design method and how do you do, you start for construction? After you got approval or the chapter, they discuss about the building official who work with that and the modification about the plus hazard area. For example, right now in your house, you maybe, you know, but maybe you not know about what the plus zone are you locate there. That's mean your house may be the plus zone A or X. I will explain for you what difference between A or X. But right now, you just temporary. Know that's the plus zone X, that mean regular. Plus zone X is a regular. You don't need to do the very deep foundation. You just do the regular Y like 8 inches minimum for the footing between the crown level up to the bottom from the footing. Something like that or 12 inches maximum. But if your house drop it on plus zone A, A like apple, and you need to do everything like raised floor or you do very deep foundation in case the blood coming to the house and your house to be okay. So that's why both of them about the structure may be a little bit different on the foundation. So I will have chain to explain with you more about that detail later. So now, go back with our, what do you know about the permit? After you apply for design, remodel, new house, something like that, you submit for the city home set from the construction document. That mean home set about the detail from design, structure, roof foundation, ceiling, elevation, something like that. For the city, they can review for you. And when they review for you, they have correction. If you finish everything, you get the permit. And after you get the permit, you can install. That mean you can view the one you design. So that's why I also will share with you about the process from start to begin to design until you get the permit. After that, I also share with you about application for the permit, what you need to do when you start and what type of construction document you need to use before you submit. That's mean on of the detail about the code, I will share with you during this course, okay? So now, if you look at the key point next for that, you can see that's many thing you need to learn with. For example, certification for occupancy. Occupancy does mean they will discuss about the people. For example, they say, okay, when you come into the restaurant, you see on the entrance door and the wall low, it's that. You can see the label, they say that's maximum is 125 occupancy or occupants like that. That mean the maximum, the people in the restaurant is 122 or 123 people, that's it. So occupancy does mean the maximum people allow to be in the same time in the inside from the building. And after that, you also learn for how you can appeals from, you know, the job and the work order, what you need to do and everything about existing building. So in International Building Code, they have you to solve out on of the issue regard with the structure and everything you need to use that the code. And International Building Code is one of the code they use right now for residential and also for commercial. So International Building Code is usually chain, not chain, but they have some kind of appendix or amendment. Usually a few years and not much. It's around, I think that's less than 8 to 10%. So that mean a lot of the code we you before and right now, very similar, just few change in there. And when they have the update version, they will send for the people have the old version before. Especially in agency, government agency, they update and they send whole series from the chain from the International Building Code for the people can use it, okay? So on this chapter, you also see IRC. Let's tell you, IRC, that's International Residential Code. Residential is just focus on the house, the small unit, 1 or 2 units house. But if you say commercial code, that's mean bigger for the office, for the people from business one, they use for, you know, for any kind from the office, they use International Commercial Code. So you see the code like this, it start from 2018. That's mean it's the version on 2018 and it's from ICC. So now, if you have International Building Codes and what are they doing? They have the provision. How about the purpose for that's one? What is the main point for the people in design and construction? The first one, they need to go with the safety of the building occupants. Safety, they need to remain the safety for on of the occupant in the building. Number 2 is stop panic. And number 3 is safety for firefighter, send emergency responder. That's mean all, everything they have to do like this for the code one. Safety for protection from other property. That's mean the neighbor, not just the building you looking for that, but for the neighbor also. So that's why they have the setback or they have some of the block, concrete block around that or they have some of the code we need to follow. Safety and protect for own property. Of course, if you have the house and the code should be designed for something, it must be keep safety for the owner, the neighbor and people serve it for that's one. That's the main point from the building codes. And sometime you see in the building codes, they have a appendix chapter. That's mean they have something they need to add it on for the code and they add it on. For example, a bandage A is cover for employee qualification. A bandage B for board of appeals. And C, D, E, F, G, continue like that. For appendix H is for size. I for patio covers. Patio cover, right now, a lot, a lot of residents, they like to do the patio. So later, I will show you 2 of general one about patio. The first one, they call that's the cover pedos. The second one, they call that's the enclosed patio. I will have 1 separate chapter to share with you about that. And after about the grading and provision for administrative, the earthquake, tsunami, and after that, replicable for buildings. So that mean many appendices, they will cover in with the chapter. So now, if you look at the people with accessible and some code they desire for the building, for the people like accessible, people they can use it and facility. We have 1 guideline, they call that's ADA. ADA, this stand for American Disability Act. And we have that, we have focus everything design in the building, inside of the building and some of outside for the disabled people. So we have the guideline for that's one. I think I posted on Canvas already. So you can see that's ADA guideline you for that's one. IBC, they also discuss about that on section 102.4.1. And wherever they submit with the section 101.4. So that focus for discuss about handicap using equipment. Okay, so like 1 of the key point, they talk about the office, so building official, that's the people working for building official. And they use the code, they review the code for the people apply for. So that's why, for example, you see the agency, the government agency, the people working on government in building department or planning department, they read the code and they use the code to review for your plan. That's mean you are citizen. You submit your plan. And the people in the agency, government agency, they need to go over with that, they review and they correct for you. If something you write, they keep it there. If something not correct, they will do the red mark and you need to fix up, re-submit again until they approve for that's one. The people like that, they can work in the city and they focus on 2 department. The first one is planning, the second one is building department or they call that the building division. Include the people, they review everything for you and they use the code, the latest code to correct for your plan. That's the people they call that's, and they working on official. It also cover with the people go to, they call that's inspector. The people after you build the house or you build about the building, commercial building, something like that, the people go inspect everything when you start to build until the finish final. That's the people they call that's inspector. And in each city, they have like 4 to 5 people to do that for every day. They can go to, I mean, the building in from the city, they check for make sure that everything you do good in the code for construction. The building official may approve alternative material, design and methods. So that's why on off, the point right here, it show that's the one when they go to check with the material, they should go with the quality, the strain, effectiveness, fire resistant, durability and safety. All of them on the material, they need to qualify with this one. And how do you know this one? All of them, they need to show on the plan when they submit for the city. And after that, they put the manufacturer if they have and they put, you know, what kind from the material they use for that's one. It should be qualified with the code using right there and alternate, you know, material with that's one. So on of them, it should go with in the final stage. And it's during the time for inspector when they coming, they need to look at this and what day, what time. Everything right here, it show on structural calculation and material reference. For the people on the planning, on the building, they can check before we start with the projects. About the permit, I just focus on the how do you apply for the permit? The first one, you need to go with the local area. For example, you live what city, you go there and you take 1 of application. In there, you show your name, your address and which one you need to do and estimate how much is it. After that, you submit for the city. When the city go over with application, they will ask you the plan. That mean you need to show them the plan, how big from the house, existing house or the building and the property borderline. That's mean you show how big from your property and the scope of work, which one you need to do. For example, you want to addition, you want to remodel, you want to demo or demolish on of the house and you do the new house, how many stories, how many area, something like that, you show on the plan. And after that, you submit for the city. The city, they go with the planning division first. They look on over for how far from your house to the set, to the boundary. That's mean the concrete wall, something separate between you and. That's mean the concrete wall, something separate between you and neighbor. And they measure, they look at this, um how big from your area and how big for the property line, they will figure out. How maximum you can design your house, how maximum you can do addition or remodel or something like that. That's the job from blending division. When they check everything setback, front back, that mean the setback in front, in the in in the rear, in the side. And they say, is it okay to start, to submit for building division? At that time, you need to ready home set. Include from floor plan, elevation, section detail, um. General note title twenty-four, everything like that and you need to share with us, sorry. I'm sorry. And after that, you submit for the building division. Building division, I'm work on building division, I'm plan checker, so that's why I go over with on of the plan, I correct for you, follow the code. If you have something not correct, I do the red mark for you, refix and you resubmit for me. Until everything okay, that's mean you do the right codes and I approve for that's one. And after got approval, you need to pay for the city, you know, the plan check fee and you can start to view or construction, okay? So they basically you do like that's. In the process for the permit. Uh it take maybe right now for the ADU or for the remodel, the new house, maybe it take for the first submitter. It take maybe four to five weeks. After that, uh you get correction, you fix and you resubmit again, it take maybe one to two weeks. And one of the projects. And one of the projects, it can take maybe um. Um one or two time, if you have very good designer, architect and consultant. If not, it take maybe longer. I have many projects, they just have two time and I can approve for that's one, but I have also. Um many projects they can do until seven time. Uh seven time for correction, that's mean every time take time for return, resubmit something like that, seven time. So that mean that you select the wrong people, work with you, consultant not good. Designer not good, architect not really good knowledge, so that's why the project have a lot of lot of mistake. With the code and I need to correct that, return, correct, return, correct like this, it's take like seven time before I approval for that's one. So that's mean uh many different case, but I hope that's I have more time. Uh later on, every lecture, I will share with you one of the real projects, so you can see uh and you know. Um about the hmm how to design for uh one projects. And how to submit for that projects and you can also see the error from some people got already before they got approval. So I will share with you about that's one. Okay, so that's one, everything like I told you about permit application, the first one you need to uh. Apply and after you need to fill out the information right here. After everything approved, that's mean you do on of the right codes, I can approve for that, you can have the permit. You pay money, the fee for that's one and you get the permits. After you got the permits, you also got one of the report. For the inspector, they can stop by to your projects to watch. Do you do, you show on the city or everything on the paperwork is the right code and I correct for you. However, when you start to build, inspector from the city need to be stopped to your house and to check on of them, they start with the foundation and after that floor. Uh wall, sheer wall, ceiling, roof, electrical, um mechanical, something like that. Before they go with the final one, you need to follow everything step by step until. Inspector say okay for everything and that's mean your house dead. So from start to the end, that mean from start to desire until the end from construction, it usually take around six month. Because um few months in the the drawing correction. Until approve and after that few more months for the projects can be done, so it usually three to six month or longer. Uh if you do just a small area, for example, you get expand your house. Your master bedroom, your bathroom or kitchen, something like that. You just give addition or you expand like one hundred to two hundred, something like that. And it procedure may be more simple, so it take maybe uh few months. But if you do A D U, you do for remodel, you do. Uh new house to level or you do some two units in the residential, it take longer. So just let you know that's the process from permit until finish, it take many months. Okay, so inspector is the one, they will start with this one. This is required for inspection, the first one, they start with footing foundation, that mean where below one from the residential. After that, they check with the concrete slab and the floor for make sure everything okay, barrier, um insulation, uh bar. Everything for the concrete slab is okay and after that, they check with the lower floor elevation, low and framing. And gypsum board, everything for the wall, weather, waterproofing and after that sheer wall. Fire, if they have the detail for one hour fire rate and they need to check with that smoke, um everything in. And after that, energy efficiency, electrical, everything we need to use for efficiency, energy. And after that order for the building official, if we have something more, they have more. Check before they go to uh final, also they have special inspection, like I told you before, some people, they have the flood zone A or X or they have some kind of different. Uh from situation or condition from the house and they have the special inspection before they go with the final. So if you look at the process like that inspector, so it take more time, for some the concrete slab, if you to pour the concrete, you need to wait. Um. Few days or you know twenty-eight days, something like this, for I everything is go. Strong enough for you can connect with the second one, second step, so that's why it take more time for inspector. This is one example for inspector, they go to check with the host piece and some of the wall. And you can see like that's from the foundation here and after the wall, they have many time to come to the field to check. For make sure everything okay and exterior okay, before you go with the next one. So basically, um. Everything look like this and now the certificate from occupants occupancy is the one from uh. Example, for example, this one they show on uh. On on the building inside for make sure that's uh what kind. Um how many people allow from there and what kind from the structure from this one and the certificate is look like this. So now, we learn International Building Codes two thousand eighteen and we need to learn some kind of reference standard. And this is both of them is will cover and they call that two eighteen International Building Code. Okay, so basically you learn from the book, you learn from experience working and you have your knowledge, update your knowledge. Okay, this is on for chapter one and chapter thirty-five. So they call that the quiz or homework, assignment or study section, this is the one cover for chapter one to thirty-five. They have around thirty-five multiple choice question. After you review on of the lecture, you need to answer this one and um an email for me. You just need email for me, for example, A, what what your choice? And two, what your choice, that's it, and you email back to me and they have totally thirty-five question. Multiple choice, so you select the best choice and you email back to me. Before the weekend or before the next um lecture day. So thirty-five question for total. Okay, so if you have any question, you can email to me and I'm happy to answer your question. Email me is at A V N at seritosh dot E D U. On of the resource from lecture and the session, homework is on canvas file. And the other one I post is on canvas assignment. You can go to Happy Life True Life YouTube to watch by video clip, everything I share with you about the chapter and the question. I also announce everything on canvas announcement. So see you next time and next time we will learn about, I think that um uh few. I mean uh the special pay number, not the lecture, I guess, for the number two. So this is number one, number one lecture, we learn about chapter one and chapter thirty-five, I post in the order. If you look at the file, I post in the order for number one, number two, number three, so you just follow that and do the homework. And after that, the homework, the study section homework, I also post the number with the chapter included there. So that's why easy for you to follow and email me, okay? So I will correct the um, I think I post in the Happy Life True Life about the update last schedule, but I'm double check and I will give you the. I mean the latest one. Thank you so much for watching this video and I hope that. I can do A D U today also, so you can watch the the one how to desire for A D U. For your house or you know your family right now. So I I will try in the best to explain very easy for you how to follow. Um because I know that's a few of you is a general contractor, but a lot of you is still the students, so that's why I try in the best to share with you. About everything very simple when beginning and after that, I will remove for you know um more higher level. I hope that if you have any question, just email me and I will answer you even just for the code, I also can. Uh answer for you about the design and permit, if you want to apply for the city permit. Because I beside of teaching in um Seritosh College, I have another part-time job in the city right now. So that's why I'm confident to answer with you on of the question about the permit, especially about residential and commercial. Uh about the design, because um I teaching eight year already. And design, I work with the private company more than fifteen years before, so that's why I think I can answer you about the design one also. So don't be shy, um you can email me anytime and hope to see you next time, thank you.